Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Abington Township Board of Commissioners Special Meeting. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioners Baratsky, Rothman, De Placino.
Here.
Lady Martin.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Langrath.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
Zepou.
Young Gertz.
Here.
Spiegelman.
Here.
Ball, Schreiber.
Here.
Bowman, Vice President Veggie, President Hecker.
Here. Thank you. So the purpose of this evening's meeting is for the board to receive an introduction to and a presentation about the proposed fiscal year 2026 preliminary annual budget. And so before that, I'm going to turn to our manager, Chris Christman, to guide us through the discussion. There'll be back and forth, and we'll have time for comments and questions at the end. Chris, welcome to your first budget meeting.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you very much for being here tonight. As the President mentioned, we are presenting the 2026 proposed budget for Abington Township this evening. But before we get started and I walk through pretty a high-level overview through some slides, I do want to take this opportunity to, one, thank the board for your input throughout the year on a variety of different issues and topics that affect our budget. And more importantly, this group that's sitting behind me here, you know, they are the backbone to everything that goes on in this township.
All right, let's give them a round of applause.
So really, without them, this project tonight, or this budget tonight, really wouldn't be able to be presented. So I just really want to acknowledge that. They are a tremendous group of individuals, and I get the pleasure to work with them every day, so that's a great thing. My presentation, since this is my first one in Abington, is a little different than probably what you've seen before. I try to take a more high-level approach and view of the budget, so as I start to talk about different things, please do not hesitate to interrupt me and stop me and ask your questions.
You don't mind back and forth, though.
No, that's fine.
This group's not shy.
No, not at all. And if there are questions that I can't answer, I'm hoping that the folks that are sitting right here behind me to my right can step in and answer those questions. If you have something very specific and pointed to their specific department, that would be helpful. I think it's always helpful to kind of understand, when you talk about budgeting at the municipal level, what kind of governs our ability to create a budget. So in our case, the Pennsylvania First Class Township Code through Section 1709 really defines how tax levies are to be established in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, particularly first-class townships. So for Abington Township in particular, our budget is composed of 10 different funds. And if you'll see them there, it's highlighted in the blue box, we have eight operating funds and two capital funds. So every community is a little different, so some communities may have more capital funds, others may have different operating funds. But for us, this is the model that we're following, and I'll talk a little bit more about one of those funds that may disappear at some point, and then the creation of another fund that's not on that list, that I think's really important for us to take a hard look at as we move forward. I'd like to address our meeting's schedule. So tonight, as you are aware, we're here for the presentation of the proposed budget, or in this case, a draft budget. It will go live tomorrow, hopefully by the end of business, at the website listed there, We are scheduling the November 13th meeting for consideration of an advertisement of this budget. As you know, you are required under Section 1701 of the First Class Code to advertise and put on public display the budget. That motion at that meeting will accomplish that. Now, we are putting this budget out earlier than anticipated. The law is written in such a way that this board, if the budget hearing was handled in a different fashion, and it may be that way next year, where a draft budget should be released to the elected officials before we have this meeting tonight. I say that only because it's hard for you, as a group, to come into this room and ask questions about a budget when you haven't really seen it, right? I'm giving you a high-level view of what that looks like. You'll see it tomorrow. If there are questions that come from this discussion tonight and your further review at a later date, we will obviously make the time to answer those questions for you, so that you're prepared on the 13th to hopefully advertise that budget and put it out technically for public display, which is what will happen next year. So, following the current format, December 11th, that public meeting, this budget will be up for final adoption, and then we're off and running for the next fiscal year. The next thing we'll look towards will be reorganization in January.
Chris, are they separate meetings, or are they to happen during the regularly scheduled board meetings?
No, this will be under new business as part of your regularly scheduled business meeting.
Got it, thank you.
Sure. To get into the little bit of the nitty-gritty, this first slide is kind of a quick overview of the expenses as they are going to be listed in your budget tomorrow. There we go. When you look at this, I think this chart's pretty telling. I'll get into some of the specifics about what went into this budget on the next slide, but I just want to point out to you, when you look at the workers' comp fund in that first part of the operating part of our budget, you'll see that it's up 2,149%. It looks a little misleading. It's misleading for a reason. This township has a workers' compensation fund that was created many, many years ago when the township was self-insured for workers' comp coverage. In 2026, we are no longer self-insured. We are part of the Delaware Valley Insurance Trust, so as a pooled environment, we no longer need to have a separately dedicated workers' compensation fund. To that end, though, there is a balance of money that's been sitting in that fund year over year, year over year, year over year, because it needs to be spent. So in 2026, in an effort to try to balance our budget, we're utilizing dollars that were in that fund for the purpose of offsetting workers' compensation costs in your current budget. So that's why that number looks really odd, at 2,149%. Similarly, in the refuse capital expense line down below, you'll see that's like a 1,310% increase. That is utilization of funds in the fund balance to purchase three new trash trucks and offset costs that are associated with refuse collection in the township. Similarly, right below that, in sewer capital, and George will correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, that number is up 124%, but fund balance that currently exists within the sewer capital fund will offset the cost of 1.5 million of expense for the treatment plant, right? So there are some projects proposed at the treatment plant that are covered by that particular line. But in all and all, when you look at the very bottom here, when you look at the very bottom, this is an $85 million spending plan, all funds combined. And when you look at that variance between 2025 and proposed 2026, the overall budget is up 5%. That's pretty significant, in that when we started this process a couple of months ago internally, there was a $6 million shortfall. You know, the department heads did exactly what I asked them to do. I asked them, if we lived in an ideal world, and you could wave a magic wand, and you could get all of the things that you need to make your department run as efficiently as it can, and provide the level of service that our residents have come to expect, what would that take? Well, it took a lot. It took a lot, and it created a $6 million hole. Well, they then went back and did what I asked them a second time, which was, now cut it all out, and tell me, how are we going to move forward with the things that you absolutely need? Needs and wants are a big thing when you're developing a budget. What are your needs versus your wants? And they did exactly that. They came back and said, "Chris, this is what I need." And this budget, in 26 years, is probably one of the leanest budgets I've ever put together with the help of these folks, and there is nothing in here that I would say to you is This is about as lean of an operating budget as you will see in a township our size and the level of service that we provide. Any questions on this slide before I quick jump off of that? So, in order to get there, this budget does propose a tax increase. I know it's never really popular. We are requesting a quarter-mill tax increase in this budget, and that would raise your rate, your total rate, to 6.172 mills. That equates to approximately a $38 increase on $150,000 assessment in this township. So for every $150,000 of assessed value, it's $38. You also know that when we went out for bid for the trash transfer station earlier this summer, the landscape of the marketplace for solid waste and recycling has changed dramatically. As a result, those costs have to be borne somehow. And the only way that we can do this equitably, the township does not have the fund balance to sustain that flat refuse fee forever. So in order for us to get there, it does require an increase of $125 over what we're paying today. The board, after meeting in September, I believe, awarded that contract, which, in essence, will award that $125 increase. Our budget tonight does include that amount of money. The budget also does not include any increase in sewer fees. They will remain flat for 2026. The township budget in and of itself conforms with DCED Charter of Accounts, and it's also in conformance with the township's annual audit. Our general fund balance, that at the end of the year, all things being equal, and we'll talk about our fund balance policy a little bit later on in this discussion, all things being equal, if we take in the amount of money we think we're going to, and we spend the amount of money we think we have, the ending fund balance is projected at $21,45,905. The most important part to this slide, though, is this budget does maintain all township services at their expected levels. We're not proposing any cuts in service, we're not proposing any cuts to staffing. This budget maintains township services at a status quo level, and I would argue, pound for pound, the group behind me and the folks that work for them do an outstanding job at delivering services in this community. I think Abington Township stands head and tails above pretty much every other community I've had the privilege of working in, so I just want to put that out there. Any questions on this before we slide on?
You're good to keep going, thanks.
So what's making 2026 different? Well, there are four main reasons. And some of them you're aware of, because we've talked about it a little bit throughout the course of the year. But primarily, the first bullet point on this list, I think, is something that you should be very aware of. Since 2018, the township's millage rate, the value of that mill continues to decline. It degrades. So that affects our ability to bring revenue through the door. So the value of your mill in 2026 is actually going to be less than it was in 2025. So that's an automatic decrease in the amount of real estate tax revenue that we're able to bring through the door to help offset costs. Like all townships, reassessments are on an all-time high. That's, I mean, Montgomery County's not really any different than any other county in this state where homeowners are going to look to get reassessed. The Willow Grove Mall is no different. As a property owner, they have the right to seek reassessment. They did back in 2018, and on that, and you'll see in the next slide, in 2018, the township's assessed value rose dramatically. Well, it rose dramatically because the assessment went in favor of the township. And now we're at a point, since 2018, it's slowly been declining, and you'll see that in the next chart. That has a significant impact. If the Willow Grove Mall assessment, reassessment settlement comes back the way we think it might, it could range anywhere from on the low end, about $985,000, on the high end, to $1.3 million. That's a direct loss of revenue to the township right up front. In the last month's meeting, or the month prior, the board approved the MMO. As part of our obligation to the township's pension plan, we are required to put in a minimum municipal obligation to help offset our pension costs. As the members that are here tonight that sit on the pension board, you know that that MMO is critical for keeping the pension solvent. So the biggest change to that was the requirement that we needed to update the mortality table that sits in the background, that provides the formula by which the pension costs are actually calculated. Well, that change was dramatic. And it was dramatic in that it raised our MMO $1.9 million over what it was a year ago. So right off the bat, call the Willow Grove Mall reassessment $1 million, call this pension plan MMO 1.9, you're out $2.9 million before we even start the day. The last piece, which we just kind of talked about right up front, was the transfer station bid. You know, again, changes in the solid waste market really are dictating this. You know, the costs of disposal have gone up. Our township was fortunate that we were able to keep refuse rates flat for the last 10 years. You'll see later on in the presentation that, you know, at this point with the $125 increase, we're not projecting any future increases to that rate through at least the next four to five years.
Chris, I'm sorry, is it okay?
Sure.
Just before we move on from that slide, obviously, we're going to be parsing this for our residents. There might be folks watching time, maybe some will even call in. Can you help, just for folks who might not know the inside baseball the way that we do, for declining assessed value? Obviously, for a great many residential properties in this township, mine included, there hasn't been a county-wide reassessment since, like, 1996. But some people are going to see that and say, wait, the declining assessed value, you know, I look on Zillow, and my house is worth two and a half, three times what I paid for it, and my neighbor just sold their house that they bought in 2000 for three and a half times what they paid for it. I don't understand. Could, like, just a really quick parse of that to help folks understand what might be a little...
I would say the key, the answer to that question is really pretty simple, like, in, when you look at trying to develop an assessed value versus market value, that's really the difference. You know, so county governments and county assessors' offices cannot use market value, they use it as part of a formula to help determine what the assessed value becomes, because, as you know, market values swing widely. So that's why your neighbors can sell their house up here, and maybe another neighbor sells it way down here, you know, it swings wildly. The assessed value is created through a formula in the law that allows it to create a uniformity across counties. So all counties in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania follow the same matrix, right? So at some point, counties have to make a decision, you know, as to whether or not reassessment is required. So reassessment, then, would then reset the value of millage throughout for school districts, for the townships, for the county itself, by adjusting the formula, because sometimes the assessment value, the assessed value of the county shifts so dramatically that they have to reassess. So I don't know if that answers or helps to clarify it, but in reality, we're limited by market value versus assessed value, and the market value drives what that assessed value becomes.
Thank you. I think that will be helpful to people.
Sure.
So, I noticed that the things that aren't on here, that I thought might be. So, like, healthcare costs for everybody's gone way up, and I'm assuming for the township as well. Operating costs, like, office supplies, like, I mean, everybody in their own homes are seeing how costs are going up and up and up, and, you know...
So, we do have a slide a little bit later on about personnel costs, but I can preface it right now by saying that one of the benefits of being in a pooled environment with divot, right, we have the benefit of a multi-trust discount, which means we have healthcare, property liability insurance, and workers' comp all kind of bundled together. And because of that, we get a benefit. We get reduced rates because of where we have all three parts. So for the township, it was a good year for the reinsurer. It was 5.7% is where healthcare went this year. To put that in perspective, one year ago, different township, different place I was working, same benefit need, that rate was 19.5%. So it swings wildly in this state, but I would tell you that because we're in this pooled environment, it is a good benefit for the township. It keeps our rates relatively stable. I have never seen divot rates really climb more, I would say 6%. So 5.7 is, I think, a fair number in the environment that we're in. So anyway, we'll point that out a little bit later on.
But just the .25 millage that you're suggesting will cover all those things, even though we all know costs are going way up?
So in order to minimize the risk or exposure to the taxpayer of having to pay more money in an economic environment that might be challenging, a quarter mill represents that $38 I talked about, but the township also took, has the ability, and we're going to talk about it a little bit later, we have to utilize some fund balance to help offset a larger tax increase. So we have the ability to do that, this board has the ability to do it. It's what we would recommend. We're trying to be very sensitive to the residents of this community, knowing that we're asking them, on one hand, to pay more for trash, and also pay more in real estate taxes, you know, but we're at a point where the township can no longer sustain operations without some form of increase. Sure.
Thank you.
So as I noted earlier, this slide represents that first bullet point. This is a more graphic representation of how the value of your mill has kind of degraded over time, but here's that high watermark in 2018, and, I mean, it looks, it looks very dramatic here, but the increments over here on the left are pretty small. But the reality is that that high watermark in 2018 represents an assessment, a reassessment that went in favor of the township for the Willow Grove Mall. Well, they've now gone back, they've sought for reassessment, it's not coming against the township. And over time, as, you know, you can see that slide, it just keeps going down and down and down. That's where, this is a problem that we have to address by encouraging different types of development within the township. I think you need to get re-energized with redevelopment. You know, this township has an economic development corporation, that's sort of their charge, is to try to encourage better and more business development in the community. That, bringing the right type of development into the township, will help to swing this curve a little bit differently. It's not going to happen overnight, it's a gradual effect. You know, as you know, redevelopment in any community is a long-term play. It's not something that's going to happen immediately overnight.
Chris, does the 2026 number reflect the mall reassessment? Is that baked into that?
It is.
Okay.
Yes, in fact...
So it's not going to get any lower?
Right.
Assuming that it is reduced by the amount you mentioned.
Correct. So that range I mentioned early on, it's either 985 or 1.3.
Yeah.
The quarter mill is required in either scenario.
Offset that.
So, you know, I would tell you that pretty much all the numbers that are in this budget err on the side of being more conservative, so that we expect worst-case scenario. And then at the end of the year, when things look a little bit better than they actually happened, makes everybody look and feel better, for sure. This chart is just some more of the same, but it's kind of showing what the value of your mill is and has been over time, and as you can see, there were periods since 2011 where the township held tax rates relatively stable. There was a four-year period from 2012 to 2015, three-year period from 16 to 18, and then again, another four-year period, 2022, to what would be the end of 2025, and we're recommending that quarter mill for 2026. And as you can see, at the end of the, at the end of the column at the very far right, when you look at all things combined, that 6.172 mills would generate approximately That's at a 98% collection rate. So all of, all things being equal, that is what the value of that 6.172 mills equates to for your budget for this upcoming year. Any questions before I jump off of that? What this particular slide represents, it shows the distribution of the millage in Abington Township. As you can see right here, we're, sorry, the batteries are going on this thing. In this third column here, fiscal year 2026 levy, the very bottom, it shows that 6.172, but then it shows the distribution of how those mills are divided between each of the individual funds. But the most important one you look at here is this 4.4361. That full quarter mill goes into the, into the general fund to offset general fund expenses. So when you look at the percent change column over here, that 5.88%, that 5% change, that is your quarter mill. And then you can see how that negative .09%, that reflects the declining value of the mill, because we're not supplementing any of these other funds with any new additional millage. So that's showing the value of that mill, and you can see how that is declining over time, and that, that has been the case probably for the last five years. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
So again, just to reiterate what I stated at the outset, the property owner in the township will pay a dollar in property tax for every $1,000 of taxable appraised value of property. What does that mean? Well, at the end of it here, if you have a home that's assessed at $150,000, that increase of a quarter mill equates to a $38 increase. So again, if your home, whatever your home assessment is, you just use that 150 as the guide, and you can inflate that number from there. But on average, it's a $926 tax bill. One year ago, it was $888. And then again, just want to note that property taxes do not include any sewer refuse fees. I think that's important to point out. This particular slide, I'm a big fan of, because I just think it really illustrates a lot of what most people think about, is where does my dollar go? How's it carved up? Well, for every tax dollar that's collected in Abington Township, you can see at the very bottom, the total millage rate across all three taxing bodies is 50.364 mills. So 77% or 77 cents on every dollar goes to the Abington Township School District, 12 cents goes to Abington Township, 11 cents goes to Montgomery County and the Community College System. So, what does that 12 cents really buy you? And I think this is one of the things that, you know, I'm most proud of. When you look at any community that offers services the way we do, for 12 cents, it's a great investment in your community. You have emergency services, full-time police department, five fire stations, emergency management services. You have a weekly trash collection and recycling service, curbside leaf and yard waste disposal. We have a road crew that maintains over 200 miles of roads in this township, which includes paving, line striping, signage, plowing. And there are a lot of traffic signals in Abington Township. There are 120 of them at least, and approximately 5,000 street lights that we maintain. We maintain all of the stormwater facilities in this township, 3,200 storm grates. We have a full-service sanitary sewer system, pipes, treatment plant, 17 pump stations. We have a very robust park system, 27 parks, one nature center, two public pools, and plenty of programming. We have a full-service library, you know, two libraries, actually, and a full-service code and permitting department that's kind of responsible for making sure that the community looks, and it looks good, and manages a lot of our subdivision land development issues for the township. So for that 12 cents, I think you get a lot of bang for your buck, literally. Any questions? All right. I would like to just take a moment and just kind of dive into just kind of the highlighted fund areas where you'll see most change when you get your budget book tomorrow. This is where your focus should probably lie. When you look at the general fund revenue picture, it just kind of, this restates kind of what we've already talked about at the outset of this discussion, but when you look at, again, I just want to, I just want to emphasize this right here, with a quarter-mill tax, proposed tax increase, we are still 2.8% lower than where we were one year ago at a quarter-mill less. So that, again, that just, I'm just trying to emphasize the point that the assessed value of the community is driving this. It's, a lot of it is out of our control, but the revenue needs are not something that can be supplanted without a tax increase in some form. When you look down at the very bottom and across the very bottom here, overall revenues are increasing next year by 4.7% across the budget. Similarly, on the expense side of the coin, again, kudos to this group behind me. They took the charge very seriously about going back into their operating budgets and finding ways to do more with less, and I know that's very tongue-in-cheek and cliche, because a lot of people say that nowadays, but this group behind me really lives it and is demonstrating that. That 4.7% is pretty dramatic in the general fund. I mean, that, to increase, that increase basically represents contractual salary increases and healthcare costs, to what Commissioner Schreiber was pointing out. So our budgets, as we're presenting them this evening, are about as lean as they possibly can be. So, as I mentioned earlier, one of the things to point out, our employee complement is still 291 employees, but when you look at this chart, you can see that through contractual obligations, we have a 4% raise in salaries projected for 2026, and that's represented above... That's represented above here in total personnel costs. That six point two percent represents all salaries, wages, benefits, insurance costs, all of the things that get baked into an individual employee's salary, um, is covered by that six point two percent. As I noted earlier, healthcare is only increasing by five point seven percent. And dramatically, which is another thing that's helping our budget, because of reinsurance, and, and I happen to sit on the, the Divot Property and Liability Insurance Board as a representative of Abington Township, um, we were able to negotiate a new contract with reinsurance that helped reduce our renewal cost by seven percent. That's pretty dramatic. I wouldn't say that, that's something that we should be, um, looking for in 2027. However, for this particular budget year, for this particular moment in time, having a seven percent reduction is a great thing. And our level of service through Divot remains the same. And the level of reinsurance that covers all of the liability issues throughout the network within Divot is fantastic. So any questions before I kind of jump off of that slide about personnel costs? Moving into the sewer fund, uh, as I noted at the outset, um, our sanitary sewer rate will remain unchanged at three hundred and fourteen dollars for the year. Sewer operating, if you look to the right, you'll see that total revenue is being proposed at about nine point seven million, expenses at nine point four. Capital expenditures outside of, um, improvements at the plant are at nine twenty-five, so that's for other, other types of capital equipment that are required for the department. That one point five eight, one hun, one, one million five hundred and eighty thousand is really being paid out of fund balance that already currently exists in the sewer capital fund. So there, you won't see a transfer in from sewer operating to supplement those costs. Uh, so, you know, George, to his credit, has been maintaining a solid fund balance over the years. He's able to absorb these costs through that fund balance, so it's not, um, it's not coming out of your general sewer operating fund.
Yeah, this is remarkable. I mean, that chart, we should blast. I mean, if you just look at it, there are twenty-eight municipalities represented on that chart, and through the stewardship of George and the team and under your leadership, Chris, we maintain the second lowest sewer rate in the entire area, and I dare say we have the best service out there.
Absolutely. And we own our sewer.
Yeah, and that is true.
We do. We do. I mean, it's kind of telling, and not that I'm kind of broadcasting anything.
No, but you can see, you can look at the other listings.
Those systems that are owned third-party.
Yeah.
You know, the rates go through the roof.
Yep.
Anyway, I'll get off of my soapbox on that particular issue.
Message received.
Um, so when we talked about the refuse increase, this is just more of a, a graphic representation of how our costs are, you know, are growing over time. And, you know, that increase, that one hundred and twenty-five dollar increase that we're recommending is reflected in this budget. As you see, it's, we're anticipating eight point, almost eight point seven million in revenue, uh, seven million in expenses, and then of course, one point three, uh, in capital expenses, and that includes the purchase of three new trash trucks. So, you know, the backbone to our trash system is the trash trucks. So the, the fleet, the fleet in and of itself is aging. They require replacement on a routine, regular basis. I would tell you from past experience that, you know, you don't want to get too far behind. You know, these guys do a wonderful job of maintaining vehicles and they, you know, with bubble gum, baling wire and, and duct tape, but at some point you have to replace them. And so, uh, you know, that one point three million represents three new trash trucks in this upcoming budget year. So on the rate side of the coin, I think this is another chart that's pretty telling. Even at our new proposed rate of four hundred dollars, Abington Township is still in the mix with other communities. And I would tell you that, you know, at the time that we, we pulled these numbers up at Dublin and Cheltenham, they, they haven't released their twenty-six rates, so we don't really know where they're going to fall next year, but you can look at Lower Moreland Township, for example, their twenty-six rates at five twenty for the same service. So I mean, I know it's, it's not exciting to have to pay a hundred and twenty-five dollars more, but to offset that cost and receive the same level of service that we're accustomed to receiving, that four hundred dollars puts us right in the middle of every, every other community in the area.
And doing this should keep us solid for a number of years, right?
Yes. So it's anticipated that there would be no increase, uh, in the proposed, or a proposed increase for rates from 2027 through 2030.
Okay.
And as I noted earlier, the increase i- is really driven by that bid. Um, it's driven by the fact that there are increased costs to dump waste in this region. So that number reflects the ability to get the trash from our community to the, to the site and dispose of it properly. So.
Go ahead, Laurie. Go ahead, John.
Two questions. One, everybody that's on here, all the different municipalities, they all are places that supply, people don't have to go out privately, that they're like us, right?
They are like us.
Um, and I'm assuming that there's other local municipalities that don't do that. Do we have any idea what it costs if, a lot more, right?
I, I can tell you from past experience in another area that it would be, um, twice to three times that amount.
Yeah. Um, that was my first question. My second question is, um, and I don't know if this is for you, maybe this is for Mike, I'm not sure. So if somebody wants to save some money, I'm thinking of myself here, um, the ga, the four hundred dollars is for the biggest trash can. So you can go down to a, a smaller one if you, or, or somebody that never fills yours up anyway. Is there, I forget, is there a certain time period that you need to make that switch? Or can you do that at any time?
You can do it at any time.
Okay.
Previously, years ago, you could only do it one time a year.
That's what, okay, that's where I'm getting that from. Okay. Thank you.
John?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, jumping off of what Commissioner Schreiber said, uh, if you have any friends in, for instance, Horsum Township, ask them about what private hauling costs. It's, it's, uh, it's quite a bit.
Yes. Thank you. All right, uh, moving on. This slide, basically, beyond all of the other funds that I just talked about, these are the other funds within your budget that remain relatively unchanged. Uh, there's no real negative impact to what goes on in these funds, but you should be aware of that. The, the only one that I really do want to point out that we'll need a larger conversation a year from now is probably going to be your fire fund. Um, as you know, there is millage rate associated with this fund to help offset costs for the five volunteer fire companies that are in this township, and Tom will kick me if I'm saying it wrong, but, uh, nonetheless, we're at a point where the fund can no longer support the type of expense load that we are seeing, uh, for the fire companies. So we will be probably be coming back to you next year to consider potentially an increase in that fire fund, um, to help us continue to offset costs. I will tell you once again, and I, I don't want to say it for Tom, but, you know, you're blessed to have five good volunteer fire companies. Going to a fully-paid fire service, uh, could cost you a whole lot more than the seven million that you see there in expenses in that particular fund. Uh, so having said that, I just wanted to plant that seed, but in reality, when you look across any of these funds, Debt Service Fund has really nothing in it because we don't have any debt. The other one that I wanted to point out is that Workers' Comp Fund I talked about earlier. Because of the fund balance that exists there from a time when the township was self-insured, you'll see that, basically that thirty thousand dollars that's there, that's just interest earnings of the funds that are there, and then the transfer out of about a million seventy-three back out to the cost centers in the budget and the general fund to offset the expense for workers' comp payments. Any questions on the smaller funds before we move on? All right. Lastly, um, before we totally close out, we need to switch gears and talk about capital. The sewer capital, we kind of talked about already, that is kind of paid for in and of itself through fund balance of the Sewer Capital Reserve Fund. The Capital Reserve Fund eighteen, uh, this is the center where all of the other expenses for the township, from a capital standpoint, are housed. I just wanted to point out on the left here, when we started this process, there was a request of almost seven million dollars worth of capital projects from the department heads. They came back and said, we can reduce that to four, four million dollars, and that's what you see here, that four million ninety-six. But I just want to point out what that represents, because a lot of it is still really lean. So one point nine million dollars of that four million ninety-six is, represents contractual payments for things that we're already doing, projects that the township is already encumbered and doing and in process of, including our grant projects. A million dollars of it, which you see right there, covers our paving program. And then finally, the last million that's really in here, um, covers necessary projects. A lot of it is HVAC replacements, physical plant-type issues throughout the township. Those things are expensive. That million dollars covers a lot of those replacement costs. Uh, you know, they are things that we cannot ignore. We have to address them, or else we have serious, uh, failure with certain buildings that will cost us even more money to repair down the road. So I would rather nip those things in the bud, but in reality, there is no real new programming in this budget, in this capital budget, beyond the things that we need. You know, for the police department, it's the replacement of vehicles, it's tasers, it's the things that they need to do their jobs. Again, I, I say to this board that, you know, the capital requests were very lean. This is probably one of the leanest capital budgets I've worked on in a very long time. So, uh, that being said, I, I'll open it up to you for questions regarding the Capital Projects Fund, but, um, if not, we can move on to the final kind of two points that we need to kind of talk about tonight.
Does anyone have questions about the capital fund at this point? If not, well, we'll keep going.
All right.
We'll have plenty of questions as we digest this, I'm sure.
I'm sure. So as you're aware, the, Abington Township has a fund balance policy in place to address, uh, that unassigned fund balance that we talked about at the outset. One of the things I want to point out, and I, I completely agree with, with this particular policy, is that when you look at what GFOA and GASB recommend with respect to maintaining three months of operating expense, that is something that I think is non-negotiable. I think this township needs to continue to do that and has done this for many, many years. That provides a safety blanket, uh, for the township in the event that there's a real problem. One that I would argue, the next point I'm going to make, is that to build upon that success, I think we should try to create what I call is, is an operating reserve fund. We cla, classified as Fund Ninety-Six. The sole purpose of Fund Ninety-Six would be to, year over year, take money, fit, money out of the budget and move cash to this, to this fund balance. Like, when you look at fund balance, this is really a cash flow discussion. You know, if we take cash out of the, out of the budget and move it into the operating reserve, you're now building true equity into the budget by having a physical cash reserve. Every other community I've had the pleasure of working in, we've created the operating reserve. The last community I was in, uh, it was anticipated we would get to ten million by 2028, and, and they're on, on pace to do that. That sets a solid foundation for that community. I'm recommending the same for this one, that we use 2026 as the year to open the account. And as we kind of talk through this fund balance discussion, I think there is opportunity in this budget for us, when we don't spend everything down, to move money into the operating reserve and to begin to build that cushion. What I do want to ask your consideration of tonight is that in the development of this budget, in order to keep the tax rate low, as I talked about at the outset, we had to do a couple of different things to kind of make, make that happen. And what, what we did do was, as part of Divot, you get the Rate Stabilization Fund, which is a credit that you can take against your healthcare. Well, that was five hundred and eighty thousand dollars. That's a one-time opportunity for 2026, for us to use that to lower our healthcare rates even further than that five point seven percent that I talked about. We also, uh, are moving money out of that Workers' Comp Fund rather than using the general fund to pay those workers' comp expenses right up front. Lastly, this budget re, reflects use of fund balance of about one point three million to plug the hole that exists even with the quarter mill. So my-
Is that one point three inclusive of the seven ninety-seven that's available?
Yes.
So it's, okay, so it's not additional, it's one point three. So we're adding, you know, essentially another five hundred thousand to that number.
Yes.
Okay.
So when you look at the second piece of your fund balance policy, it spells out kind of exactly what this township should do with respect to any monies that are left over. Some of it goes to OPEB, which is Other Post-Employment Benefit Liabilities, uh, your capital fund, and then fund equity, which is basically, that seven ninety-seven goes back in to hit the fund balance, uh, in the general fund, the short of. Long story short, I don't believe personally that you need to have that so rigid that where you're defining where those dollars go in that chart. That seven million, or almost eight million dollars can remain in fund balance, and then this board can make a decision at any public meeting to utilize those dollars if they're not being used through the budget process. So if a board approves a budget that has X number of dollars assigned to an expense, that some of those dollars, that means your fund balance is lower, well, it's part of the budget. If we would come to you mid-year and say, you know, we need another million dollars for another project, this board would have to approve that in order that, and through a supplemental action.
Yep.
You know, at a public meeting. And so I, I would recommend to you that we revisit that, that lower tier-
Mm-hmm.
And make a decision on whether or not you think that's still appropriate. We could adjust the percentages if you're uncomfortable eliminating it altogether. But I would tell you that OPEB, your, your OPEB fund actually has point three three mills going into it every year. So it's funded already at a hundred and twenty-five percent. It's overfunded. And so these excess dollars that exist here, that two point, almost two point eight million, would be going in to a fund that's already overfunded. So those dollars can be, can and should be used for other purposes.
Got it.
Is, is what I'm saying to you. But, um, again, that's not my decision to make.
Well, hypothetical question for you.
Sure.
So let's say the board is in agreement, and in order for us to pass the budget on time this year, and we want to make changes, I mean, we're running up against the calendar year to do that. So we've talked about this, talked to Stuart in the past, we haven't talked recently about it, but I, I do think those percentages are rigid. I think they were intended to be rigid at the time that they were implemented because we were trying to move away from a raid-the-bank account to fund operating expenses, and we did a good job with that. But it's ten years old, and it's probably time to take a look at this and make sure that the philosophy guiding the implementation of that policy remains true today, or if it needs some tweaks, we should do that.
I would say to you, to answer some of that question-
Yeah, sorry, that was more of a-
It was more of a comment, but-
It was more of a rambling comment than a question. It's been a long week.
I would tell you that, you know, this budget, like I said, does require that one point three million to-
Yeah.
In its current form, without adjusting taxes any further beyond than what they are. In November, when we bring this budget forward for advertisement, we could redefine the fund balance policy and have it on the board's agenda for discussion, whether that's a form of a resolution or an ordinance, whatever, whatever it takes to modify that, we could put that before you for consideration.
Well, I want to see what other people think, but I'm going to ask the question to you. I mean, you said it here tonight, that the OPEB fund is funded, it's overfunded, right?
Yes.
So why would we allocate two point eight million dollars in a year where we've got financial challenges to fund an overfunded fund when those dollars could be put to more immediate purposes that would have more tangible, short-term benefit, right?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I'm just trying to summarize what I think the question before us is going to be. Go ahead, John.
Yeah, I mean, and, Tom, you and I, as, as among the sort of relative old heads, we remember when that policy was established, and at that time-
I was a young whippersnapper when that policy was-
You were, you, I mean, look at, you know, I was-
Yeah, your hair was short.
I might, but I was much darker and more, and more spry. What used to happen back then, and I know a lot of folks, maybe a lot of folks watching this, certainly, plenty of folks in this room might not even know, um, back in the day, certainly when I first joined the board a thousand years ago, um, you know, there would be, when, you know, there would, when, when there was a budget shortfall, as, as would happen, um, there would be all kinds of discussions. I remember, I'm not going to name any names, but there was, there was a, a, now longtime former commissioner who would always bring up, uh, whether or not it might be a good idea to, you know, privatize or otherwise sell one or both libraries. Um, I remember once, actually, before I, when I would attend meetings, before I actually joined the board, um, there was one comment once about what, uh, you know, what parks could possibly be sold. And then what would end up happening is, as Tom described, um, they would just use fund balance to avoid raising taxes. Now, obviously, nobody wants to raise taxes, but that, that is deficit spending. Now, obviously, nobody wants to raise taxes, but that, that is deficit spending. You dig yourself, you dig yourself a hole. And that, I remember when, when we debated and established that policy, I remember, you know, I remember butting heads with former, former Commissioner Klein about, about that, but I mean, I think he was right ultimately in, in the, the structure of that, of the policy, was to, you know, you be able to use some fund balance mercifully, because this is, you know, the, everything, all these outside factors, as we see every day, you know, inflation and other cost increases, you know, the rainy day, the deluge of a rainy day that we all experienced with COVID, with the, with the shutdown era, which illustrated exactly why you have reserves, why reserves are mandated, even, even the most minimal reserves are mandated for exactly that kind of thing. But yeah, I mean, the circumstances have changed. Back then, our, our, our obligations to former employees, OPEB in particular, you know, that was woefully underfunded, better than many other municipalities who were like practically not unfunded, but it was woefully underfunded. And I think this, the, the policy as originally designed, has, yeah, exactly, has achieved its goals admirably. So I, I, having been there back in the day, I concur, this is, this is an excellent and important time to, to reassess and evolve that policy.
It's a good comment.
Hey, John? John?
Hello?
I think it's Dennis.
Oh, Dennis?
Yeah.
Hi, Dennis, sorry, we have, we have the presentation up, we didn't see who's on screen, so you sounded like God calling John from afar.
Just one quick comment. I'm going back 25 years ago, and that's exactly what we did, John. We took from fund balance, so we didn't have to raise taxes, and that, that's what we did, it was just normal for us to do it back then.
I remember.
So you're right there.
I do want to clarify for Liz, we are not selling the libraries at any point, so you do not need to worry about that.
But we're going to rent them out.
Commissioner Rothman?
If we took 2.8 million and threw it towards the overall costing taxes, would that make any difference financially? Now we add 2.8 million more dollars, you know, that's brought in whichever way you look at it, would that really make much of a difference at this point?
No. I mean, at this point, I would tell you that you need to course correct, which is what we're trying to do with the quarter mill. I mean, I don't want to paint a rosy picture for you in that this is all we're going to see. I think we're in for a couple of years of trying to figure out exactly what we need to do to stem the tide. I mean, some of this is going to come down to tougher negotiations for contracts as we go forward with, with our unions. I think there are things that need to be addressed through that bargaining process. So there are tougher roads to hoe ahead. So to answer your question directly, no, I don't think it's going to make much of a difference beyond that.
Commissioner Mike Grant?
Thank you. I want to, I just want to understand what you had said before, which was, you're going to use 1.3 million of balance to plug in the hole, right? So does that mean that there's 7.9, or seven, or close to 8 million plus 1.3 in available 2025 balance?
So if, if you, if I'm, I'm going to look at Jeanette, if I'm not saying this correctly, she'll kick me, but when you start, and you start at the very top of this, and you look, and you get down to that line where it says the three months operating expenditures, that's your 13 million, that's required, and when you subtract that out, what's left in our fund balance reserve is 7.9 million. So at that 7.9 million number, then it hits the second piece of this that's outlined in the box, and then it would be divided out. So that 1.3 would come out of that with 7.9, in reality, if we did nothing with the box. It's literally, I would recommend to you, it's going to come out of that OPEB liability line at 0.35, because we do need the 0.55 and the 0.1 that's already identified in other parts of the budget. Does that make sense?
So the 1.3 is included in that 7.9?
Yes.
Oh, well, I'm sorry, I thought it was over and above. The second part is, as I recall from recent agenda, was that the OPEB benefits actually became more expensive recently. So is, are you accounting for that when you talk about the 0.33 mils?
Yes. So that was my question to Jeanette a day or so ago, which was, you know, is the actuary comfortable with the 0.33 that comes into the OPEB fund to supplant all of the expenses that are associated with any increase in the retirement, in the retiree costs? The answer was yes. So it's not something that I would say we can put our head in the sand and ignore for the next 25 years, because it's not, it's not a set it and forget it. I think we have to revisit this annually and take a look at it to make sure that there's enough revenue available to address any concerns in the OPEB account.
Okay. But whereas OPEB was a real concern some time ago, at this point, it's not, it's not to be forgotten, but it's, it's not something that we have to have the same kind of grave concern and allocate the same amount of money.
I would, yes, and I would say, to put a further, finer point on that, it's okay to take a look away from it for 2026, but in 2027, we're going to make sure that we have enough money to meet our obligations.
Okay, thanks, sure.
Any other comments or questions?
Okay. So I guess, lastly, I meant my closing comments. Just to point out, and you can read along with me if you will, as has been the direction of this Board of Commissioners, the draft 2026 budget is being presented as a balanced operating plan, maintaining all public services at accustomed levels. Abington Township continues to deliver high-quality, cost-effective community services, and the draft 2026 budget provides the roadmap to support those operations. Following questions from the board this evening, the draft budget will be released on Friday, October 17th, and will appear on the board's November agenda for authorization to advertise the proposed budget. And then to follow up again, it would be on your December agenda for actual adoption.
Sounds great. Other comments or questions? Well, Chris, I want to thank you, and, go ahead, before, I'm not done.
Chris, I mean, was, was your plan to like call up directors? I know that there's a lot of numbers that are flashing, that have been flashing in front of us, and to get more specific, or is this-
This is, this is kind of the end of the show. I have them here tonight, number one, because every community that I've worked in, I think it's important that these folks get a seat front and center, because it's their hard work that gets us to this point. So anyway, and if, of course, if the board has questions that are more pointed towards the departments of anything, really, at this point, whether it's 2025 or 2026, they're here to help answer those questions.
I mean, it might be a little premature task to get into the nitty-gritty, but-
I think it is, until we release the budget.
Yeah. But I, you did bring up one point, which was, you talk about Economic Development Corporation, and, and I see that we can only, we need, I, I think as a, as a, as a board, and maybe as the township, we need to really look at our revenue sources. You know, it seems that right now, our shortfall is we're trying to make up through real estate taxes, right? But we see what's happening with the mall, and I think that there are, is there any kind of thoughts in your mind about other revenue sources and looking toward the future and trying to maybe prop up some of the commercial properties?
Well, I think that, and I'll just focus my comments more solely back to the EDC. I think any community that puts one in place has a true opportunity to allow them to develop and bring the right kind of development in, because I really see this as a levers game. You know, when you look at revenues across your budget, you twist one lever here for taxes, it's, in order to get that to go back up, we've got to twist another lever somewhere else, and that's going to be economic development for this community. You know, redeveloping our corridors becomes hugely important. You know, I've heard on a number of occasions from different commissioners over the course of this last year, that, you know, we want Abington to be a destination place, we want people to come here, we want people to stay. How does that happen? Well, I think you have to empower your EDC to make some good decisions, and they need to be, become a partner of this board, you know, through the planning process, and I think there are probably some tools in their toolbox that we need to help them complete. You know, when we look at the, at 2026, we really should use that as an opportunity to finish up some of the things that comprehensive planning, for one, to allow them, you're asking a group with one arm tied around their back to go out and try to make things work when they don't really know the rules of the game. So until the Board of Commissioners decides what it wants its community to look like, it's hard to engage the EDC to get out there and do the right things, if that makes sense. So I, I do think we have some things we need to do internally here in the upcoming year that will help them get stronger, and we're happy to do that.
Okay, thank you. Other comments or questions?
I have, Tom, I have one.
Yeah, feel free, Dennis.
Did I understand, Chris was saying, we're going to get, and for years, we always got a budget book to go through, make notes in it and stuff, did I hear right? We're going to start doing that again?
I would tell you that, well, the township did put a lot of money and invested a lot of money into Open GOV for the electronic budget book, so I believe that our hope and goal is that we continue to use the, the online budget tool. Certainly, Dennis, offline, you and I can talk about some format that maybe will be helpful to you, we can certainly do that.
Yeah, I'm just old school, you know, that's just, that's me.
It's all good.
Okay, well, thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Dennis.
Thanks, Tom.
Yep, any other comments or questions? Chris, I want to thank you and all of the team assembled here tonight. We, maybe we don't know exactly, you know, what it's like to be in your shoes on a day-to-day basis, but we appreciate the challenges that you face in your jobs and the challenges that serving a community present, because, I mean, the good news is, we're connected in a way, in a very direct way, throughout the community. And so it feels to me a little bit like this may be the beginning of a next, a next phase in the life of the township, right? As we think back over the last five years, we had the pandemic and all of those associated trials and tribulations, we had the catastrophic fire earlier this year, and now we're at a sense where it feels like we're beginning to put pieces together to build, and what you're suggesting to us, I think our financial strategy is that will help ground us and make this township financially viable over the long term, so that we can realize those aspirations and the hopes and dreams that have been articulated to us by members of the community. That's the goal. We have, we have work to do, as we do every year, and we'll do this together. This is the beginning of a process that will conclude in December. So this is a, this is a two-month journey that we're about to embark on to get to a budget that everybody can stand behind, recognizing that we have some choices to make as a community to set ourselves up for the future.
Hey, Tom, can I say something just in closing?
Yeah, sure, Dennis.
I, I got to tell you, Chris is an outstanding manager. I'm working with him on two issues, and, and he's unbelievable. So I just want to give him the credit for all he's doing and helping me with a couple different things. He's just outstanding.
Well, Dennis, we appreciate you sharing that feedback. I mean, not to embarrass Chris, but I think the sentiment is widely held that we made an excellent choice, and we are delighted that you're here. We appreciate your collaborative spirit, your energy, your can-do approach, and like, nothing's ever a problem. Doesn't matter when we call, doesn't matter what the issue is, we'll, we'll figure it out.
That's right.
But we appreciate that, your steady leadership. And again, to all the staff, we appreciate your dedication on a daily basis. We know sometimes it gets hard, but we're here, we appreciate you, and the community appreciates you, and what you do makes this community great, so thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, I guess we'll open it up for public comment, if there is any. There's nobody in the room, but there may be somebody on Zoom.
Laura Lehman, you're unmuted.
So, so much to unpack in this, and I will just say, this is the first time I've heard Mr. Christman really speak since he's been here almost a year, and while you're all praising him for the help and advice he gives you, the residents have had no access to him, many of us. If some have had access to him, I've yet to hear it. So we need to have somebody who, he doesn't have to answer all the questions, his job would be to appoint somebody to get us answers and to answer the ones that they can't. And so, you know, that's very important. He says he has a, I, I want to preface what I'm going to say with the fact that we had a 39% tax increase in the real estate tax just in, I think it was 2020 and 2022, I think it was. It was two years with one year off in the middle for COVID, that you didn't dare put them all three in a row. But literally, there, the plan was to put 10%, test the market, nobody whined too much, put the, the next 20% in, and it ended up being 39% increase. That should have lasted a real long time, because you're still getting that money. And there is no excuse to have a budget where you're saying there's no fluff whatsoever, and then you've got 2.8 million dollars that you're, you've got left over, which you know you're going to have left over somehow, and then you've got money that you are going to open a new account to put basically our tax increase in, and use it when you want it, instead of the way it would normally have to be used. I am totally opposed to all of that, and I have seen that kind of reasoning and manipulation in the township for years. Mr. Spiegelman brought some of it up when Mr. Klein was here, and we had, you know, incredible things going on that shouldn't have. We need workshops for this budget, the residents need to have an opportunity to have real input by withholding the documents, contrary to the law, the open record law and the sunshine law, which don't require you to, but advise you to, give the documents in advance so that real meaningful comment can be had by the public. And you've been asked, and a right to know was put in, completely denied, it, it's just stunning to see this, and this is year after year. This has been since Mr. Manfred arrived. So it's not okay to withhold all of this from the residents. We used to have workshops where we had plenty of time to have input that could then affect the November document that was being advertised. We need 10 years of general operating fund to be seen, the fund balance, we also need the township-
Ms. Lehman, please conclude your comments, your time has expired.
Well, that's another thing, that they, and, and I emailed all of you the exact wording from the open record site, that a, a, an issue like this that's complex needs to have more time.
We have two months, it starts tomorrow. Thank you for your comments.
No, it doesn't, that's not public-
Thank you, we are adjourned. Oh, we do, that came up at the end, I apologize, we have one more public comment, did not see that 30 seconds ago. We are unadjourned.
Connie, you're unmuted.
Hi, thanks, can you hear me okay?
We can hear you, yes.
Okay, I just have a quick, three-minute comment.
Sure.
I just want to thank Mr. Christman for the good presentation, it was very good. I don't know a lot, I'm new to this, I just retired, and I'm trying to get involved in Abington Township Affairs to help out, but I'm going to keep my, I better start talking fast, so we have three minutes. So, good evening, and I just wanted to thank the Finance Committee for the time and effort you devote to preparing the township budget each year, and to all the people that helped Mr. Christman make this work as much as possible. That said, I'd like to raise a concern just about transparency and meaningful opportunities for resident input, because I come from a nonprofit background, and I, we had lots of transparency, and I'm disturbed, I've been disturbed. Last year, the process was strange, I was going to go into all of that, but it looks like maybe this year will be a different process. You're not going to do the same timeframe, maybe in December you'll have the actual final vote, that's what we're, that's what it seemed to me when I watched your presentation. But last year, the residents really had no way of knowing that the October 1st version last year at the budget presentation meeting would be the last time that they would have any input. They had the comments, but we don't know what those comments were, they just disappeared, we don't know what they were, and there was no summary really about the comments, and we don't know if they were even incorporated, but essentially, the budget at the, in November was just the same one that was presented in October. So it looks like the residents' input wasn't even considered or incorporated or anything, we just felt, in the, you know, people felt left out of the whole thing. I was just minimally involved last year, but I was involved enough to know that. This year, it would have been helpful if the preliminary budget had been posted even a few hours before tonight's meeting to the public. That small step would allow us to review the document in advance and come prepared with more meaningful comments and questions than I can, because my brain is fried right now, but I, Mr. Christman, you really did do a good job. now, but I, Mr. Christman, you really did do a good job. But it's a lot of information, especially for people that aren't versed in this. We don't want to waste a meeting, though, or we could be using it to ask and form questions. So if you could provide the budget before next year's meeting, we would really appreciate it, and if there's a new budget before the next meeting this year, we would like to see that before the meeting as well. So that's why I'm asking the Finance Committee to take three simple steps to improve transparency. Post all public comments online at least a week before the adoption vote, so residents can see what concerns were raised. Make sure the version being adopted is posted in advance of the vote, so everyone can verify whether their input was considered. We don't even know what happened to our comments. And then the last one is just, please, next year, please post the preliminary budget the morning of the presentation meeting, so we can look at it and just get acclimated. And these changes will not require much more work than is already being done, I'm sure you must have had it ready by this morning. And we would show that the residents' voices matter. Transparency builds trust, and right now, the budget process leaves too many questions unanswered. Withholding the preliminary budget till the night of the presentation may be legal in a township's view, but the optics are clear, it limits transparency, undermines public trust. Thank you very much for your presentation, and I hope that you'll hear my comments and act on this. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't believe there is anyone else, so with that, we are adjourned.